We're close enough.
We have Joe Begon here.
I believe that what happened is that Joe has been serving on the committee without having been appointed. And his position was not reported as vacant because he was there and he hadn't been there for two terms. So even though we filled the three empty positions.
This was not one of the empty ones.
That was not one of the empty ones.
So there is, okay.
So.
So there is a vacancy there.
Because it was never officially built.
Because it was never officially built.
I was curious about that.
Right, because we did suggest to one candidate that he come back, pay, come back again. But, okay, this is an unusual situation.
So Joe is occupying a position that is open but was never voted upon as being filled. Do we have more people on the committee now than we're supposed to have?
No.
No.
We're even. Including Joe.
Including Joe.
Including Joe.
All right, good.
If you officially appoint Joe, that will be the full complement.
Fine. So you're looking to me for comments, questions?
I'm just, someday, somebody might look at this tape and wonder how it is that we had candidates that we turned down and now we're, and that's the explanation.
Okay, all right.
Is that, is that there was a transition that didn't happen completely.
It was informally filled without coming before this point.
Right.
Right. So just as the liaison from the Select Board, you know, to Bike and Ped, Joe's transportation experience has been quite helpful on the committee. He's been a very active member and look forward to asking him to stay on officially.
Officially. I'm often mistaken for vegan ped. That's a career choice, I guess.
Does anyone have any questions or shall we just?
Yeah, I mean, he's been doing it, so I think we're good.
And doing a good job.
Doing a excellent job.
I just have a question. So, I mean, you're a unique candidate in that you already know kind of what's going on there. Anything in particular observations you'd like to share with us with regard to the committee or challenges that they've got?
It's a really good committee. You know, it's one of the better ones that I've had the benefit of serving on, you know, over my time kind of doing this. Very active. It's a very collegial group. It's, is product oriented, trying to get things done, you know. So I think it's, it's been a really good experience. I've enjoyed it and the extent that I've been able to help out and, you know, kind of help people on that. It's, it's been rewarding, I think. You know, it's like any challenges you have, there's always more to do, you know, I think. But I think people have time. On this group historically have built a great foundation. You know, you can go back and look at all the things that have kind of led to this point. And they've found a lot of people over the years who have put in a lot of hard work and produced a lot of good results. And I think that's something that, you know, everyone should feel proud of.
I just have one question, actually. This might be from Greg or Debbie. What is the term of the appointment? Because the website says, and the website has not been updated yet. Well, I take that back. The website says his term ends in 2025. The motion in front of me says 2026. Am I reading that correct?
Yeah, I was trying to keep them so that's three, three and two. So it's two, it was one and three.
Which is it? Which, which is it? 2025 or 2026?
I put it as 2026. It's gonna be 2026.
It's going to be 2026.
Yes, I'll change it on now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, it's in the motions. Yep.
Is there a, whose motion is this?
This is mine. Okay. I move that the board appoint Joe Begon to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Discussion? John?
Yes.
One says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep doing the good work, please.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for coming.
And continue.
Give me the chance, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good too.
Now, yeah, speaking, Ken. Are, are there any comments on the consent agenda?
Just one, I have just one.
Jeff?
Uh, no, I have, has the motion made or?
No, no, we're just.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay.
It's Jeff's motion.
So is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 19th?
Uh, it's not moved.
Second.
Thomas? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Answered yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Still have 10 minutes? Are there liaison updates?
Just a couple of, couple of things that DPW related. The PPOS testing or experimental testing or pilot testing, if you will, is ongoing at both, both locations, both at the Lincoln Street well and at the gravelly pond. And different testing activities are going on there because the water that comes out of most of those sources has different contaminants or different things that must be done to it. So that'll be ongoing. I think the Lincoln Street well stuff will, that'll, that'll go pretty quickly, but gravelly pond will take quite a few weeks to be completed. And the DPW is gonna send out a, send out a survey for, to all water, all water users concerning their pipes to ask them if they have lead lined pipes. Now, I think that most people have no idea. So I'm curious how that survey is gonna come back. They're gonna say, what do you mean? And the DPW can go and help, but I know that, I think you can put a magnet on your pipe that comes into your house and if it's, you know.
Well, it's not magnetic.
No, but that's the key. If it, if it doesn't stick, then you know you're okay. There are only so many different materials.
Plastic, so.
Okay. Then, then you know. So anyway, he's gonna do that survey that's kind of driven by EPA, DEP requiring to know what the story is with lead pipes in town. He only expects that one or 2% of the houses in town really have lead pipe issues. About the pipes coming into town, but we'll find out.
So is it actual lead pipes or is it like cast iron has lead joints?
These are lead pipes. And they're old pipes.
Yeah.
And the town is.
When you say, when you say old, could, what's the range? Like 300 years old?
Like 150.
Okay. So something built 50 years ago probably.
Probably is okay, but you go back 100 years, et cetera. And how's, homeowners are responsible from where it enters their property. The town is responsible for all the pipes going up and down your street and the branches going to your property line. So the line from the town main, from the main line going up the street, half of that the town owns and half of that you own. And the town will deal with its end, but needs to know what the property owner lines are.
Yeah, from the curb, there's a curb stop.
There's a curb stop for something.
That's the defining line for ownership. And there is state funding to help with replacement if necessary.
So I'm curious how this will all play out because I know, you'll send out this information, people say.
Right, so the survey will provide some instructions as how to help, help determine.
What's going on?
What kind of pipe you have coming into the house. You look at where it comes in through the basement typically. Before it, you know, as it goes through the meter and then into your house.
The pipe coming into your basement would be what was just outside your foundation wall. It would be the same pipe.
I wonder, I would wonder, I mean, it seems that we're looking at a small, a.
Very small number.
Houses that probably were built before the, in the, before the 60s. Wondered if the assessor could do something to target houses that are most likely to be.
They, they can, however, EPA is requiring that you survey all.
Excellent, okay, fine, fine. And, and the other usual question is suppose I get my water bill electronically, where does my electronic survey?
They are working with the vendor to make sure they have that list.
We still have received no notification of the water.
We're working with the vendor to get that list.
Do we have a timeframe for that?
I can find out.
Okay.
I can't imagine it will take too much longer.
I mean, he's planning to start when and replacing them.
The RFPs went out last week. He's gone to several different vendors to say, what's your number?
Okay, and, but start date in the RFP, do you remember?
Hmm, I didn't get into that detail.
Winter time.
Winter time, okay. Sooner rather than later, I think would be, especially because people are snowbirds, they may be more likely to do the electronic and they may not be around. Get other communications.
That's it?
I don't really have anything on the report this week.
No, I missed the Bike and Ped meeting last week and Finance Committee is kicking up again. I think they're meeting tomorrow. So we'll be attending that and listening. They have a very large agenda, so I think I'll do that one on Zoom.
One of the things on, on their agenda is that we might in the MBTA zoning. In preparation for the town meeting, we want, the landlord wants a financial analysis of what the impact of the, of the proposed MBTA zoning would be. And that's conflict, the Finance Committee has been asked to do a part of that. The, there are two parts. One is an estimate of how quick the build out is likely to be. And then based on that, how much impact you'd have in five years, in 10 years and in, in a full build build out. The Finance Committee did something like this for SLV, but that was relatively simple because with SLV you knew exactly what you were going to get. How many years of what size, and they all came on at once. So I don't know, I, I will be online to encourage them to take this on even though it's hard.
Yeah, I mean, what, what they, you know, typically what you do is a financial model. And then when the other piece of the puzzle comes in, which is the, what's it called? The propensity for change study? Then you plug those numbers into the model and you get your, your study. So they can, they can be working in parallel to the propensity for change and I just think some information is better than nothing.
Yeah, and, and the consultant who's doing the propensity for change won't have that until the end of September at the earliest, so. And the MBTA zoning group is planning a number of events in September and early October, trying to get word out about what the, what the changes actually are. I don't, did not put together a list of the various places we're talking, but any place that's willing to listen.
Yeah.
Anything else that we have to spend about five minutes on?
I can talk a few points on my viewpoint, Billy. So I mentioned, in the paper, I mentioned the construction activity that is picking up or has picked up. Certainly people have noticed the work on Pleasant Street, the water there, the bypasses are being placed, put in place. And they're getting ready to reline that pipe, so they'll basically ream it up, the existing pipe, and then put a new liner. And once it gets cleaned up on, of all the deposits that have collected over.
Do you, do you have an idea of how much deposit there is or?
Oh, it's thick. So it's a, it's a 16 inch pipe. It has probably lost half of its capacity. Through, over 100 plus years that it's been in place. And so they reestablished that, basically, not quite 100%, but pretty close to full capacity. Obviously, you have the space of the liner that goes in, but that's not even a half inch. So that'll be a significant improvement and that's.
What happens to the stuff that they dislodge?
It all comes out at one of the pits and collected and trucked off. So that work is underway. Soon they'll begin work on Forest and Mill with the new water and sewer line work that will be done there. There will be notifications to all the homeowners. They'll be putting a door, hanging flyers on the doors as, before this work begins. The same company is doing both, so it just depends on their timing, how, what kind of progress they're making on Pleasant. And then when they can free up a crew, they'll, they'll put them on Forest and Mill. So that, both projects will continue through the fall. The water portion will finish up before hard, hard freezing sets in. And then the sewer line work will continue on, on Forest and Mill into the winter. We also will be getting underway with cooperation from the state redoing intersection at Harbor, Harbor Street and Bridge Street. Making that, those two sub lanes will disappear to become a standard T intersection with a safer crosswalk with pedestrian acts, activated signage, flashing light. So that work also will be taking place this fall. And also Walker Street is getting repaid because they had the new pipe work done last year. So that's getting, that'll be underway as well. So it'll be, it'll be a busy fall with, with construction and hopefully things will go smoothly and not be too disruptive to everyone.
So is it going to be open two ways or?
There'll always be one way of traffic. There, there will be times when it's, when there is just one way and you'll have to alternate and there'll be traffic control. Occasionally there'll be times when they just block one lane and detour people around and just have it one way. So, so there will be some.
Big.
So there'll be signs up. So they did that the other day. They, they put up a sign at, at Pine. Do not enter.
Okay.
As they were doing some work. So there will, there will be times when that happens. So that's, that's progressing on the, on the Mason building and working towards finalizing the PNS. We able to secure zoning board of adjustment approval for the expansion, the additions that are proposed. Special permits were needed because we're expanding a non-conforming use. So that went smoothly and we'll be working with the, with the Masons and finalizing the PNS. We hope to have that done by the end of the month. And meanwhile, we're working on, on getting an RP out for architectural work to finalize the plans. And that'll take place as well as getting a fundraiser onboard to help us with the fundraising. So that'll all be happening this fall and into the winter. That's underway.
Greg, question on that?
Yeah.
So it's not just a purchase, you know, it's the ongoing operations and stuff like that.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, condo docs.
Condo docs and, and who's gonna, who's gonna run the place? Who's gonna be responsible for it operationally?
Operationally, so it'll be the Council on Aging.
Council on Aging, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And that'll be, I guess, be introduced into the budget process for, however, like when we need to do it for this year, will, will, will we be using it as a resource for the Council on Aging through this next fiscal year or?
There'll be some impact, but not a lot.
So most of it will be for the following.
For 2026, yes, yes. We did have an error with our vendor on our excise tax, so about 400 people received a bill in error. And they should not have received that bill. The, the vendor grabbed the wrong, the previous database rather than the current database for, for those who were, who hadn't paid yet. So that was an unfortunate error with the vendor. We're working with the vendor to make sure that, A, we don't do that again. And B, that there's direct communication to those people. In the meantime, put it out on, on the website and on social media that the error did occur. And certainly apologizing for, for that mistake. People got a delinquent bill when they should not have. So we're getting that cleaned up and working with, with our vendor on that. Gave you some update on marinas and moorings. Waiting for some further guidance from Town Council on, on that aspect. And you'll be having more information on that after we've had a chance to work with the HAC on a revised plan of what they might propose. And, and ways to, to make sure we're in full compliance with currently with our conflicting state regulations. There are some, the regulations that, that the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection has promulgated has a contradiction in it. It says two things that are opposed to each other. So the, the IG's office has issued some rulings in some other communities where they have identified the inconsistency. Have asked the DEP to, to clean up the regulations. This goes back a few years and they, they have not and addressed them. And so that causes this ambiguity that's out there. But the rulings that the IG has come down on consistently saying that, that onboarding must be allocated through the Harvest Master's Office by using a waitlist if there's any for that. So we'll give some more information as we, we get some more guidance on this. And as I said, the HAC, they were gonna, they, they are meeting tomorrow. They'll be talking about this and they're, they're gonna need to go back to the drawing room. As they propose, potentially propose changes to the current regulations. So let's, let's stay tuned.
Yeah, I wonder if that's something we should put on action items to follow up?
Yes. Did we have that as a follow-up already? I heard we had talked about having that come back.
And just marine, mentioning a moorings.
Yeah, that's, that's, but it's the whole of the regulation. I mean, that's one line in the, in the regulations and there, there are.
Yeah, we talked about doing that in October.
Okay. That's there, yeah. Okay, now I have, we armed. The, the Fall Festival special. Event, one day alcohol licenses. Do we need to open a hearing for that? No, thank you. Private questions about. I have one question, which is is it just beer and wine?
Yes.
Okay.
Was it, did we have an alcohol license for them last year or no?
No.
We did not.
But they wanted to get off the ground one year, the first year.
They did, right. They got, they got one day last year for just Saturday.
For the license?
Yeah, pretty sure they did, yeah.
That was the, I thought that was the.
The festival by the sea.
Maybe it was just a festival by the sea.
The discussions.
Yeah, so now that they're looking to do it for this year, that's it.
Last year, last year's kick off, they, they wanted to get too complex. They wanted to get their feet under the, you know, the ground. And this, the plan was always come back for the second year unless we're there right now.
By the, 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 there will be police detail.
Yes.
Detail and fire and ambulance there as well. Both of those.
They'll have the same details they have, but they'll add extra detail for the.
For the beer garden.
For the beer garden.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah.
They really need it for all three days?
That's what they want.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm very comfortable with it during the day.
That's not gonna work at night, um.
I mean, this is supposed to be a family event, right? I'm just wondering if we started with no alcohol last year, if we could take one step and maybe say daytime alcohol, you know, have the beer garden open during the day. Is it necessary to go whole hog, like complete hours for all three days?
I'm surprised.
We've had, obviously, the festival by the sea has always been day trading.
It's day.
Right, but there's never been, there's not a lot of people sitting around, all right?
This isn't the Fourth of July.
Right, okay. I, I just, I think they really, they'll make sure that it's well monitored. And again, I see your concerns, but I don't, I don't think that's, it's.
Throwing it out there.
Oh, would you like, can this be put off to the 24th? This decision? You could have somebody from the organization.
That's a good idea.
Are they on?
Are they on?
Somebody's on?
I'm also wondering if, you know, I'm thinking of events like this that were held in, you know, other places where I lived. And if there are any lessons learned from other towns that do this sort of thing. I mean, this is, you know, it's rides for the kids, right, if I'm remembering, family oriented event. I'll be back to other events that I took my children to and they didn't have a beer garden, you know. And I, so I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying don't do it.
The concept here is more of a, rather than just, it's no longer a carnival, it was 20 or 30 years ago. They are trying to make it a family, but with the vendors they have and.
Someone's gonna address that maybe.
Well, I know that, I don't have a, I don't have a vendor list here, but I'm just trying to remember back to last year. It certainly had a fall festival kind of atmosphere there. There was a good police presence for as far as the walking around police and fire. And I, I frankly don't, I think it's, I think we're good.
Um, John, Jeff?
I don't know, yeah, I don't know. I don't have a problem with it. I guess it's something that we'll have to see how it works out, you know. Maybe we should have them come in and talk to us. Do you know if people aren't feeling, it's not gonna hurt anything, right?
Or maybe just limit the hour, you know, I just.
I just, I wanna know what the impact will be on them if we limit the hour, but that.
Even not daytime, I mean, you know, just six o'clock, seven o'clock, that's dinnertime. You have a beer with your dinner or whatever. So I mean, I'm just wondering why we have to go all the way to 10 o'clock. That's kind of my.
I think if we've got this question, we should probably let the people who are asking for it represent themselves.
Yep, and I, I would love to hear from Chief Fitzgerald as well.
Yes, okay.
So I think it would be helpful if you did give official approval for the event itself.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Separately.
Yes.
And just continued the discussion perhaps on the license issue.
So I move that the board approve the Harvest Festival minus. Minus the licenses, the alcohol licenses.
Second?
Second.
John?
Yes.
Answers yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, so that's. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have let you speak, but.
Oh, that's okay. It's hope, uh, but, uh, so we did an offshore pride festival every year with 40,000 people. I'll give, it's during the day. We have an alcohol, a beer tent. And what we do is a double barricade required by the city of San Antonio, so that people cannot be in alcohol over to someone who's not of age or wouldn't be able to go through the identification process, they're partying at the, at the entrance. So it's a over two foot wide double barricade all the way around the tent. I just thought I'd add that.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
So a motion would be in order to continue the public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Although, oh, no, it's not my chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Continue the discussion.
No formal consent needed.
To the 24th.
That's fine, you're right.
Chief Fitzgerald and the organizers to talk about the hours. And when you're letting them know, I don't think there's any objection to having an alcohol rec for three days, it's just how far into the evening yet. There's no fear.
Yep.
Okay.
Stop selling alcohol, just stop selling.
There you go. Yeah, right. Yeah. Can we hear exactly 7:10? For the flagpole discussion. And here I am going to interject myself because I have what it was for me, new information from reading the Supreme Court decision in Sherwood versus Boston. In part of that decision, the court held that the messages of permanent monuments in a public park constituted government speech even when the monuments were privately funded and donated. So the ownership of the pole is not an issue according to the Supreme Court. This is, what goes on that pole is government speech regardless of who paid for the creation of the pole. And to my mind, that, we've been arguing back and forth for a couple of years about who owns it and what does it mean and who controls it. And I didn't realize that the Supreme Court had made a decision on that particular aspect of the. And that we had a communication from someone who said, well, if you put anything on the pole, it means that you have to put everything. We have a policy that is quite complete about what goes on the pole. And to my mind, this declaration that a pole that was privately funded, we still have to, I think, approve everything that goes on it that is not the US flag, including the POW MIA flag. Otherwise, we are letting, we are at risk of allowing anyone to put a flag on that pole under the Sherwood decision.
So government speech is at our discretion?
Government speech is at the discretion of the select board of the town, yes. It's various, for various kinds of communities, but yes. And what I would like to do, to suggest that we think about this for another couple of weeks and prepare a proclamation for Veterans Day saying that the POW MIA flag can fly on that pole year round. So that it complies with the requirements of our policy.
Where are we going from there?
I think where we go from there is we decide what goes on that pole. It's government speech.
I see that as a separate issue and I understand the interpretation that perhaps other flags, other than the American flag must, you know, should go, must be approved by this body to go on that. And you want to put POW flag in that category along with everything else, that's fine. I think that the separate flag pole issue that we're talking about here on the Town Common, I think that's a separate issue. And I still think we can move along with that particular issue separate of deciding that we have to vote whether a POW flag is going to go on the Town Honor Roll flag pole. But I do think that we need a separate flag pole that is outside of the monument or the Town Honor Roll or whatever you want to call that commemoration. And we have a map before us for that, suggestions for that pole, which would become the primary, in my mind, the primary town flag pole.
I just, this is the Vietnam Veterans Plaza in Beverly.
Okay.
With two, the two flag poles there. Okay.
There.
This is right on the end of Cabot and I believe it's Essex Street.
Uh huh.
All right. Just noticed that coming through.
Okay.
Okay, so it was not unprecedented. And I agree with John that we've been kicking this around. We agreed to basically find a location for it as opposed to debate this any further. And I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, those poles are very close together. What is?
That's different.
Yeah, okay.
It's all part of that Vietnam Plaza.
Yeah, this is one of the.
I did not notice, I don't think so. It depends on my angle when I was driving.
It was, I can, yeah.
Oh, I guess these are two different.
Okay. Which location do people prefer?
I prefer the one out by the fountain.
Which is in front of the church and not in front of the town hall?
Well, it's kind of centered, you know, it's all in the common there. I don't necessarily identify it with being with the church. In fact, I would say it's to the side of the church if you want to bring the church into that picture per se. But.
Question?
Yes.
So in order to do this, if the town had a second flag pole, wouldn't he was right? Wouldn't that require some type of expense, you know, digging up? I mean, we're talking about a substantial.
Yeah.
Flag pole there, wouldn't that go before town meeting as a budget line item?
Unless we take it out of our buildings account.
Because personally, I would rather the people decide what they want to do and whether or not they want to spend taxpayer dollars on this. I guess this is more substantial than what we talked about, you know, previously. So is there any reason why we want to just let it be a vote at town meeting? You know, do you want to?
Switch in the spring?
Either, I mean, either spring or fall. I know we kind of want to keep the fall meeting separate for the MBTA zoning, but this decision, if we made it in the spring, then that would be in plenty of time to fly the pride flag, the progress flag wherever the town decides. I just feel that the select board, we've been going back and forth on this for three years and the best way to end the discussion is to let the town have their say. That's just my.
Well, they're gonna have their say about a poll or not, but it's still up to us to decide. If they say no.
Right.
Then we still have one poll we gotta make a decision on every year.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying, we're spending, this is, you know, we don't want to, the Town Common looks lovely, the, you know, in front of Town Hall, it looks lovely. A lot of money was spent on it. I personally don't see the need for a second poll, but a lot of other people do. And before we go ripping up, you know, everything and I just, we have a lot of things we need to buy around here and I would just, why wouldn't we want to let the town have their say?
I would like to throw Mascanal back in the mix.
Okay.
Okay. I think that it's, there's a flag pole that's surely lacking at that location, okay? I think that as far as visibility goes, it's gonna be, every voter coming into town is gonna see it. Every commuter on their commuter rail is gonna see it. Thousands of beachgoers every year are gonna see it. And again, as far as the progress flag, depending on the calendar, one and possibly two concerts in the park. Okay, so we're not talking about hiding it, there's a lot of visibility there. I think it becomes, I think it'll, this, I think it would just look great there. I think it'd be.
Where, I mean.
Well, that we can discuss. Does it down by the bandstand or is it further out at the point?
Ah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I was, I was, I had it next to the World War I soldier.
No, 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 because I think that, you know, in talking with Heather at home at Pox and Rec, they can't have, there's no place to, you know, there's, if there's an event where they want us, the National Anthem or the Place of Allegiance, it's very difficult to find a flag there.
So you're saying out at the point?
I think the point would be gorgeous. I think it would become, as, you know, now, when people are coming in, you want to go to Reed's Park, just go to the left of the flag pole that you see. Okay? And I think to your point, it maintains the quaintness, as it were, of the town, the Town Common.
Well, I mean, I just want to be clear, I have absolutely no objection to other flags being flown pole that's there. I, what I respect is the fact that the design of what's there is visually confusing to the average person. I have asked a lot of folks, even, you know, just, you know, people at my hairdresser, you know, I pointed to it, I was like, you know, that monument there, what do you think that is? Everybody said it was a memorial, okay? And they thought the flag was tied to the honor roll. It's just visually confusing. People don't understand the concept of an honor roll. They had no idea that there were live people whose names are on that, that display. So it's visually confusing and I think that's a source of a lot of our angst here. So what I'm suggesting is we not make another mistake around something that's visually confusing. Let's think about what we want, you know, all to represent. I personally think if you do a second, you know, if the town wants a second poll, we're talking about government speech and having it in the, you know, in front of Town Hall is important because this is what we stand for. We are inclusive, you know? I think that's an important statement for the town to make. But it's one flag pole or two, you know? But like I said, I just feel that if we want to go digging up that area, I think that's, it's up to the townspeople whether or not that's how they want to spend their money. That's fine with me.
Yeah, I don't know how much this costs. This is not a big line item, but is your concern, I'm not sure your concern is the money so much as it is the issue, I want to get a vote from the town.
It's both, it's both, because I'm a little concerned about digging up something, you know? I think we spend a lot of time at town meeting debating $2,000, $5,000 line items for the police department budget, right?
This is in this category.
Right, and so I'm just.
It's not a $100,000, it's not a big number.
Right, but I'm just saying, we debate those line items, you know, I distinctly remember, you know, was it tasers or something? We debate a lot of small dollar items at town meeting. I think this deserves the same level of discussion. I don't understand why it has to be just the five of us making that decision.
You know, I mean, I've just read the copy that has come down the pipe in the media from all of the various towns, of which there are about 30, that have got various policies. Not one has dealt with the town meeting, but of course, none of them had to put up a flag pole. It was really just a policy sort of issue, but it never went to a town vote. It was just really decided either by the town manager or by a select board. But I can appreciate your comments on that. The question is, and what is something like this gonna cost, a couple thousand dollars or something? I don't know.
I was, you're probably with five, five to eight thousand.
Okay.
Bruce, you could probably answer what the existing pole costs.
Yeah, really run a $5,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this one, if it were, for example, at Mascanal Mall, would be a lot bigger, I would think.
I would hope so.
It could go between five and 10, you know, by the time you dig it up, you relandscaped the place. I mean, you know, not as expensive as a new Semtex system, but it's.
I'm of the opinion that we've been kicking this around and I think we decided last, last time we were here, or last time we discussed this, was now we had to just select a location for it as opposed to kicking this further down the road. But that's why we're here, is to decide on a location.
Well, my position is I prefer the spot out by the, by the street, out by the fountain for that flag pole. And I understand the money issue, I understand the townwide issue that Kathy is bringing up, but we have spent a lot of time on this.
And I will, I think the location that John is speaking of, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I like that, I mean, if we're gonna put it out there for the reason we're putting it out there, it should be out front. I do like the idea of a pole at Mascanal Mall, but.
That's another day for the dog.
If we're putting a line item for poles, we could put them in the line item for poles.
Yep.
I just think that it would.
There's no saying you can't have two flags and two poles, you know? We have government speech that we sanction and we have progress flag or some other flag here in front of Town Hall, it can also be on the other pole.
I mean, for me, it's not, it's not the progress flag, it's what's gonna come. You know, I support the progress flag and I support that community. But it's what's gonna come down the road and, you know, what is acceptable flying over an honor roll, I guess, you know, not a memorial, but an honor roll? And what isn't, you know? And someday, there's gonna come a time when somebody wants to fly something that isn't.
I hopefully would never put up a flag, we never vote as a select board to put up a flag that you dishonor or call a foul.
I know, but we're not gonna be here forever.
But, yeah.
I mean, I take this pretty seriously, so.
I'd just like to add that the genesis of this, okay, was the veterans and their feelings. I didn't serve, okay? The only way I know how to envoys who did is respect their wishes. And I totally understand why they're, the veterans are looking for that pole, American flag, and that's it. And I respect that and I support that, you know? We, and the last time we were together discussing this, there was discussion from, I think it emanated from the veterans as far as the second pole. Which just speaks again to why they just want to keep the flag, that one particular flag pole at that particular location, you know, as an honor to all veterans. Not necessarily just the ones that are mentioned in the honor roll, okay? And I respect that and I'm gonna support that.
So I'll also add that I did not serve, but I did support the military for 32 years and worked with a lot of veterans side by side. And we all stood out in front of our company headquarters every June along with our CEO and everybody else, a leadership team, and raised the progress flag. I appreciate the fact that the genesis of this discussion was in part due to veterans' concerns. There was, at one of the initial meetings, some very disrespectful language that came in the comments that, you know, Joe, you probably didn't have an opportunity to hear because you were not on the board at the time. So while I think the veterans' comments are honorable and certainly worthy of respect, there were other comments that were quite uncomfortable and disrespectful.
And I think we can all agree that we ignore those.
Well, they were pretty bad, okay, yep.
I guess I will take comments from others first?
Yes. Uh, Bruce Icy, forty-nine thousand Street, Manchester, Mass. Um, three things, the POW MIA, can I go, can I go this route?
Sure.
So those veterans that are any here from World War I, World War II, were missing in action. And one of them is actually in France, very dear. So he was an MIA and they were prisoner war. Uh, so the POW flag is important to have on that honor roll, which I thank you for that. Um, the, the, the third flag flying on that flagpole, because the ropes got moved and the, and the plates hold the flags, when the flag is not flying, and the third flag is not flying, the flags get lowered on a half staff. The flags have beaten the lights off, so the pole has not been lit since February. So because the, the beads have beaten the lights, now I've asked for the lights to be repaired, um, and it has been looked at, they actually repaired one of the walkway lights, that was broken, but the other lights have not been addressed. Um, so there's a problem with the lights and technically, you're flying a flag at night without a light on it. So, but that's an issue of another story. And I wanna go on records to say that if you are looking at a flagpole, I have a group of people that are interested in purchasing that flagpole for the town. Okay? So just to let you know.
Thank you.
And that's all I, thank you.
Oh. Uh, Hope Abucci, uh, Chuputnem Court, thank you so much through you, thank you to the board. Um, first of all, uh, I'd like to ask, um, uh, the board just to poll the board as to why you do not wish to have the progress flag fly on the flagpole. I, I, I've heard about why you want it moved, but I haven't heard why you don't want it flying on the flagpole. So I'd like to poll the board for that. Um, secondly, um, we've been flying this flag now for four years and, um, and we've heard nothing about lights, nothing about, um, the flag being flown too low as the, um, our, um, town manager has indicated when it's a half staff. Um, the, uh, the LGBTQ community has no issues with that. So, uh, and I find that to be an interesting fact, that as we go on each year, we find more and more reason why not to fly the flag, the progress flag on the town official town flagpole located where it is currently. Um, thirdly, uh, Mascanomo, um, all you're doing is hiding the progress flag from, uh, the public. And, um, to Kathy's, uh, point, thank you so much, you're letting, uh, the LGBTQ plus community and its allies know that it is not a reflection of town government. That the progress flag being flown in a park away from town government uh, indicates that that is not a reflection of town government opinion or support or welcoming. Um, so I would, I would really be interested in knowing, uh, a poll. And, um, thank you so much, Brian, for the, um, private invitation to speak privately with, with you. But as I indicated with your invitation, um, I would not be willing to do that since this is a public forum and I believe that all of the public should be informed of any discussion about this. And I'd, I'd finally just like to know if there have been any private meetings between, uh, the veterans and, and the board? And, um, secondly, uh, just to, to the final point, um, that you, uh, Brian, talk about, um, veterans, that, uh, veterans want the flag moved. I'm a veteran, um, I don't wish to have the flag moved, there are many veterans who do not wish to have the flag moved. So I just want, uh, for, on public record, uh, for people to know that. So I thank you for your time, uh, if we could do that poll, please, through you, that would be great, thank you. Um, for the public record.
For public record, I'm going to start, um, I would, I have seen the damage. The pole is not tall, is not tall, it's not as tall as the pole that it replaced. And it has more elaborate lighting. And, um, if we were to continue, I think we would be, with it there, we would need a taller pole. I... That's about the extent of it. John?
Yeah, okay. Um, this is with regard to the pole, the sequel pole that we now have. And I look at that particular pole as a commemorative flagpole for veterans. Okay, commemorative whether they served and they, or they died, or they, they, they've just served, it's an honor roll. And that's what it is. To Kathy's point, if you survey people and say, what's going on here? I think they understand it's some sort of a military commemoration. But that's about as far as it goes. And I think it kind of confounds things when you're putting other flags up generally when you've got a, a military commemoration, it's the American flag, a POW flag, and that's it. And my, my position is that another flagpole would become the official town flagpole. I would add to that, that I would say that the American Legion should take over the responsibility of the flagpole that's in that, in that, uh, in that monument.
We would love to.
And the town would no longer have responsibility for that.
That is not possible, that, that...
You, you mentioned that it's on town property, so therefore, so, but that can always be delegated. So, but that's, that's my position, I think that we should have a, an official town flagpole that is a primary town flagpole that's outside of the, uh, the honor roll. And put that, I, I told you which position I think is in fact more, perhaps more public than the...
The one in the trees.
Yeah.
So is the flagpole current, is currently there, is that flagpole a town flagpole and you're coming?
You have not been, like, we're not doing back and forth. Yeah, that's through me.
Yes.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're treating that as a town flagpole, I think we went over that a year or so ago and that it kind of became that when we took out the other, took down the other town flagpole and put this one up. We didn't realize, although I think, I, I don't know, maybe, um, Becky at the time said there was some discussion. It be, it, it got put in, in, inside the honor roll and therefore, it really had other meanings than purely, uh, a town, town flagpole that is to commemorate all of the town activities and events that the, uh, select board deems appropriate.
Um, I'm sorry, I did, should not have put people on the spot. Um, I was willing to respond to the poll, um, to, to Hope's request for a poll, you don't have to.
I, um...
I, I'm fine repeating what I already said, I'm fine with one flagpole, um, the way it is. However, I do see the, um, benefit for a taller flagpole, I mean, by default, it's the town flagpole, there's only one there. I'm a little bit concerned about cluttering up town common, which is why I suggested that we wanna go forward with a second flagpole, let's get a landscape designer so we don't rip up our beautiful, um, front lawn here, but I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay.
Oh, I've already made my...
Yep, okay.
Okay, I guess the other question I have, uh, there's a comment question, is why are we, why can't we have, why are you against having a second flagpole? Okay?
Um, true.
So, I'm sorry, the question I have for Hope would be, why is there a, an objection to a second flagpole? Uh, again, the...
The second prominent...
On, okay.
For a town flag.
Tom, okay. The, my suggestion for, uh, despite what has been, uh, said, I'm not looking to marginalize a marginalized group, I think it's just a great location for a flagpole. Okay? Uh, and a lot of people I've spoken to in town agree. So the, uh, that's, you know, I'm, I wanna honor the request of a group of citizens and, um, and that's what I'm, that's where I'm at. And I'm more than willing to compromise and have a second flagpole in front of town hall.
So, I don't know, to me, when I look at what we have, it's part of the memorial. It's not really a town flagpole, I mean, I know that's what we have and that, you know, we've been...
That, that's where it was.
We've been band-aiding this thing along, kinda, in my mind, because, you know, I want the LGBTQ plus community to be able to fly a flag and support them. I don't think we're, by doing it the way we're doing it, I don't think we're doing any justice to anybody. It looks like it's just thrown together when it's there, you know? You drive by, like, I drive by there and I don't even see that flagpole some days. You know? If it was out front, outside, out front and center, it, it would, it would do everybody justice, you know? Um, I don't, yeah. I, I just, I think that we need a municipal flagpole and I think the pole that's there doesn't represent that. That's what I feel.
Thank you.
Hope, I just wanna answer Brian's question if I could. Um, the reason, um, that I want, why I don't want another flagpole is because I'm really, uh, seriously concerned and have great concerns about the reason why this was brought. The reason why an LGBTQ plus progress flag should not fly on town common. And, um, and every year that we've flown it, every year, if you look back in the records, in the minutes, there's a different reason every year and multiple reasons every year why we shouldn't fly the progress flag. And, um, our community, uh, is exponentially more at risk now more than we have ever been in the past. And, um, our town government, in my opinion, should be reflective of the support of our community. And so this ongoing push by some veterans uh, to rid themselves of the association of, uh, the queer community uh, with, and separate them from veterans, we, we are part of the veteran community. We are a large part of the veteran community. And I think there's been way too much effort to try and remove the progress flag. And that in and of itself sends a message. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if I may, uh, uh, a question, a question to you, John. Um, what would the legion think about replacing the, the pole that's there with one that is taller? So that there would not be a problem with flying it?
Um, that's gonna cost the town ten thousand dollars plus.
Okay, we were already talking, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
We're already talking about asking the town to pay ten thousand dollars plus for a second pole.
You, you're gonna have to, 'cause that's embedded in concrete. Uh, so you're gonna have to jackhammer that concrete up, you're gonna have to pull the benches out and do all that work around there to create a taller flagpole. I would, um...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so my, my question, and it's not to anybody but you, the selectman has gotten, or asked me for a, a report of all the stuff that happened with the veterans' honor roll. And I sent that in a couple months ago, three months ago. Debates and everything else, that section of town common green was fenced off and was given to the veterans' honor roll for the sole purpose of a veterans' honor roll. That separate flagpole, the POW flag, MIA and American flag. The section was approved by the historic district, Concom and all of the other select boards that previous to you guys, all approved unanimously to give it to, this section was for the veterans' honor roll for the sole purpose of a veterans' honor roll. And it, it incorporated the flagpole in it. And everyone approved this flagpole in this veterans' honor roll plans. So to, to, through you, to Hope, is, it got approved three years ago, four years ago. Um, one of the selectmen said, it's a, it's a town hall flagpole. He never did his homework to make sure that it was approved ten years ago, prior to that, as a veterans' honor roll. So it, it isn't just that the, and the petition that I put out did not, um, segregate anybody, especially the LGBTQ, we wanted them to fly a flag on the town common. I'd like to use that, have it up between the pillars. So a town hall flagpole representing them or representing anybody that the selectmen want is, is all in favor of it. Um, it just, this section of land was donated for Colin...
Let me just interrupt slightly. It may have been offered to you to use, but only the town meeting can transfer town property.
And it did. It was all approved and when it got fenced off when you redid the town common.
The town meeting, not the select.
Okay.
That, 'cause town property land requires an affirmative vote and, and, or...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure that it had...
That did not.
Okay, okay, so anyways, that's...
Okay, I understand your position.
Position.
I don't think the argument's who owns the pole, I think we're already...
The, the, the ownership of the pole is moot.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um...
Can we move this?
Can we, can we agree to position two, that that is the preferred position from the board?
I just...
Yes.
What is position two?
Position two is, um, on the east side of the, of the, uh, fountain. Um, it's between the fountain and, um, the pressure tree.
Further to the street, more visible.
So I'm just asking, or to, for point of clarification through you, uh, Anne, so are we, are you voting tonight in favor of the flagpole?
What we are, what I think we are leaning to is that I would like the select board to, to, to adopt a position for a second pole. Then I think we would, I would like to encourage the select board to put that, um, into the town budget proposed for the annual town meeting in the spring. And if the town votes to put that pole, put up a second pole, then that would happen and that would become the town flagpole.
So the suggestion for, um, a possibly just putting in a new flagpole in the current location, a taller flagpole?
No, no.
So, so Anne, is what you're saying then that what you'd like us to vote on tonight is, um, the requirements that we put into a warrant, um, an article on the warrant for the spring town meeting?
It's probably going to be, probably would be a part of the budget line item.
Budget line item. Budget line item.
Do it as a capital line item.
Do it as a capital line item.
How do we, capital budget?
And, and, and we might, you know, as long as we're doing flagpoles, we could, as we get to the, to that point, suggest that it might be nice to have something at Mascanomo Park that, um, would be visible to access by water, drain.
Yeah.
So... So your suggestion of a second pole, of a, of a new pole that's taller, that's, that's not on the...
Second pole, the taller?
No, a new pole that would go in the place of the current pole.
No, no.
I, I...
I'm not a favorite guy, I wouldn't vote on that.
Okay.
Why not?
Uh, no, you don't get to do that.
No, I'm just asking you, why not?
Because it defeats the purpose.
I mean, that, that, the primary concern is that the flagpole is in the middle of a commemorative structure. And so therefore, the thinking is, is that that pole is dedicated to the activities associated with that structure, which is really veterans, and that's it.
But that's not what I've heard from everyone.
Well, that's what you're hearing from me.
From you.
Okay, so as a result, and, and that in part is supported by Kathy when she says, hey, what do you think's going on here? And, you know, they're really, so, so, so it, it really asks for having a second flagpole, which becomes the primary town flagpole, which would probably have an American flag on it and other flags such as the pride flag at the appropriate time, and if there are other flags, fine, um, at, at appropriate times of the year. And that would become the primary town flagpole.
So the board is saying that the current flag is really just a veterans' flag?
Yes.
You realize that when the town administrator said it's a town flagpole?
Okay.
Okay. Got it? Got it, got the message, thank you.
I would, I would, the Town Flagpole dedicated to the honor.
Yeah, well, it's been very difficult because of the shifting of the poll.
I understand.
You understand, so it's been very grating.
Yes, I understand there's a motion.
Yes, I move that the select board designate location number two as the location of the official Town Flagpole for the Town of Massachusetts by, and instruct the public public works, well, we'll change that.
I think it would be nice if we let the taxpayers have their say.
Okay, so, uh, let's change this. I move that the select board designate location number two as the location of the official Town, Town Flagpole for the Town of Massachusetts by the sea and.
Included as a capital line item for the spring town meeting.
Included as a capital line item in, in the Town Meeting.
Second.
For the discussion. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I say yes.
And Johnson says yes.
And Johnson says yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I go on record and say that the company that you, Bruce IT49 Pleasant Street, the company you have doing the water lines is awesome. And they're doing a great job. They're watching them working on.
Now you got a front row seat.
You got a front row seat.
Going up and down the road and the police are doing a great job trying to finagle all that too, so.
Thank you, we'd like to hear good.
We'd like to.
Yeah, so, great job.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll watch you deal with the blue for data blue. Okay. The next item is government classification and office follow-up. And Greg, I think.
Sure, let me, uh, further up to the first discussion.
Maybe on my paper.
The first discussion concerning retirement classification. It appear that our hands are pretty tied on estate law. Though we can pursue, we can always pursue a special act. Town Council's opinion is that we are not likely to be successful in that, in pursuit of that special act to put, to move the harbor master from group one, which has a minimum age of 60 for retirement, to group four, which is a public safety grouping that has a minimum retirement age of 55. She feels that both the state retirement agency and the regional retirement agency would resist that move.
Is this an act that applies to all towns, is it the state level?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the, the conclusion is, is that this doesn't apply to any harbor master anywhere in Massachusetts? Right now, they're all headed for a, they're all group one, all right, I understand.
Is, is there anything?
No, I don't know for a fact if anyone has gotten the special permission. That's something, that's some information we're trying to find out.
Oh, okay, all right.
But in, in general.
Sure.
That's the approach.
Is there anything besides retirement age inside of that or no, just, that's the only?
That's, that's the factor.
That's the factor, that's it, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a retirement issue about when you become eligible for, for taking a full retirement.
Is, is Bion eligible under one or the other, the?
Yes, he's, he's eligible under group one now, he's, he's.
He's old enough.
He's old enough and he has enough years. He's not, he won't max out, he doesn't have the 32 years.
Okay.
It takes 32 years to, to obtain the maximum benefit.
So if, if, if it were changed, he would get another five years effectively, or no?
No, no, it just, he could have retired earlier if he, if he had had the 10 years, you need 10 years minimum.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to assess how much damage, how much Bion would benefit from, and it sounds like not much.
Yeah. This is, this is for the success, this is for the next person.
For the next person.
It's for the next person, okay.
Does, uh, you mentioned police academy training, is that a factor in any of this at all?
Well, that, I was making the assumption that it would, but I'm being advised no.
I mean, it's a nice to have, but it's really not, that's a separate issue from the.
So the state is requiring that training in order for the harbor master to have full arrest authority on the water.
If the town so desires to make, to have that happen?
Yes.
Okay, yes, understood.
So in the past, harbor masters have had authority to arrest without that full training. But with the, with the new police reform law that was passed a few years ago, they changed that and said that only those with full academy training have the authority to, to issue arrest or tickets.
That seems counterintuitive, now he becomes a public safety officer if he can arrest.
I, I, I agree with that, so this is something that could be taken up with.
So can we change the designation of the harbor master and call him something else?
Jay, I'm sorry.
Instead of calling him a harbor master, call him a on-water police officer or, uh, I mean, if we're gonna start splitting hairs over something like that, then let's, let's see how far we can push it.
Right, I mean, the other point is, you know, you raised the issue, it seems contradictory, so maybe it's something that the legislature has to take up and we could certainly pursue that through our representative and senator. It seems like if you're, if you're requiring harbor masters to, to be trained officers in order to have the authority to arrest, then you should also allow them into group four. That seems logical to me.
Yeah, well, there you go, I realize the problem.
Our representative and senator might have an interest in that, given the other towns that they represent.
Correct.
Is there any other town or city along the coast that is having the same discussion about harbor master classification?
I don't know about the classification, they're certainly having the conversations about the training.
Do, do any currently have training, Gloucester, Beverly, Essex, any of those folks? Any of those harbor masters also on police academy?
I don't know, that's a.
Essex for sure, no.
Yeah. No, I say, um, I don't believe Rockport or.
Gloucester, I would look onto Gloucester or Beverly, or Marblehead.
Yeah, I just don't know.
I'd be curious on that, I, I think that would be a good piece of.
Yeah.
Why am I know?
We can certainly gather more information.
But it, it sounds as if all, we should gather more information and probably direct it to our representatives rather than trying to have a special act and.
I believe that'd be more fruitful.
Right, yeah, I, I don't think this is something we should take on ourselves, we're too small.
Somebody else pays the way.
Yeah, well, or does safety in numbers or get more done and more heft, so.
You got Bruce, you just got. How many coastal towns does he represent?
Right, exactly, yeah, let's all get together and do something that's consistent. So while we go out and have to hire another harbor master, we're not, you know, we're already competing with each other. We don't want to be at a disadvantage.
Yep. Okay, so by consensus, the action here is, is to get information about other harbor masters police certification and, and where, and address this through our representatives. Good. And the second was the office follow-up, and I assume that's harbor master office?
Right, right, so, you know, that was pre-COVID, that we pursued the option of Reed. With, when COVID hit, that effort fizzled, for a technical term, but anyways.
At the same time that the MBTA has put in, they've made it more clear where their boundary was.
Yes.
And it, the, a new office would have to come further into the park than I had imagined.
They took down.
They took down the bushes that I was saying they kind of put.
Yeah, it took down the bushes, so that.
Yeah.
The, uh, the, it was very preliminary, but the preliminary work that was done indicated that you would have to elevate the building. It could not be at ground level at Reed Park because of flooding potential. As a restructure, it would have to be elevated up.
Wouldn't we have that same issue at Masco though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And.
About the same level too.
Yeah.
And there will be a sewer line.
Connection.
In Reed Park, assuming that the, the dockage stuff gets past even, uh, permitted eventually. Whereas I think if you. Yes, the pump out, but there, there'd be water and sewer already there, whereas at Masconomo.
You'd have to run it up from the.
Run it.
Rockton Beach.
Yeah.
But if you're talking about putting bathrooms there at some point, well, who knows if that's gonna happen, but.
The, the other, the other change is, is that if there is a connector from Morse Pier that goes to where the harbor master boat is, then the argument for Reed Park is much weaker.
Right, you can easily get from one to the other quickly.
Yeah. My, what, do we have any hint about whether there might be an opportunity in the former community center building?
The, uh, I have had preliminary discussions again, but it's, I try and nail jaws to the wall. I, it's, the building's available, they host a couple of groups from the old community center. But at this point, keep missing. So I'm, you know.
It's a possibility.
Yeah, the potential exists, I think it's a.
It's what it takes to close the deal, I think is what Anne is asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's the.
Just sit the man down, I just can't, I can't, just sit him down, that's all.
I, I think in the next couple of months, we should be able to.
That, this is a quick answer to that. Eventually, I think we're going, there're going to be bathrooms somewhere in that area, preferably serving the Masconomo, but waiting to see until whether there is in fact a passageway and, so.
Yeah, all the pieces gotta come together. All the pieces gotta come together and then figure out from there what, which way you're gonna go with it.
But, but having something where it's at least downtown and, uh, you know.
It checks the box of being on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's about it. Uh, my understanding is there are federal funds available?
Yes, the state, state end fund.
State end fund, that as long as you have the criteria of showers and, of restrooms, harbor master's office could be fully funded.
As long as what, there are showers?
Showers.
You're providing some amenities to the boating public.
Oh, for the boating public.
So does that have to be in a building that we build on our property? Or can that be, like, if we're renting the communities, what was the community center?
We don't own it, so it's, uh, it would be very difficult.
Right, so we have to build something at that point?
And if the money is there, I mean, I've, I've, I've spoken with Bion on a couple of occasions and even to the point of a double float, putting a building on top of a float, not unlike what I see in Salem Harbor. There's, okay, uh, then at some point, maybe be able to lift it up and put it on the land in the future. But if the, if the money is there and, uh, we then, I, I think as we try to improve and expand the inner harbor, then I think a harbor master's office in the inner harbor.
Um, yeah.
Is, is ideal. The, the community center certainly a.
A stopgap.
A stopgap, but if there are funds available and if the current harbor master and his assistant feel that they can get by on something else, like, you know, the float, and the, where the, where the tent is right now, is what he's saying, is that goes away and then a double float, putting harbor master's office there. And public restrooms. I don't know, just, I, I think it makes a lot of sense and something for, as we improve on the harbor, that it's, it certainly is a linchpin to, especially if it would bring more and more trends and bonuses.
So we need to look towards something temporary before we do something else?
So I could do with the party.
Well, I mean, you know, if you had the money, you could have something ready for next summer. You either prefab or, you know, everything doesn't have to be built up from scratch, right?
Right.
You, you get a prefab, there's plenty of those, they're very affordable.
Where they would build the floats themselves, right? In the past.
Yeah.
You'd have something ready for next season.
Yeah, they could, but.
But anyway, that's.
That takes time, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, uh, the short term, I'll still try to get ahold of Harbor's Point. Uh, I met with them, I ran into them, I said, absolutely, let's get together, and then it was crickets. When I, when he wants something for me, it's really fast.
I think the only other consideration is, um, when we're talking about the public ba, public restrooms, those are needed even in the off-season for us, right? And so we have talked about perhaps a lot, you know, sub, subcontracting to a local business to allow them to use, to have public restrooms. Did we ever do anything with that?
So it was something that the DIP is pursuing, and I, I don't think they.
Oh, I thought we needed you to pursue that, I.
Well, they were gonna test the waters to see who might be interested in that.
I think we have that.
I thought it was Beth, I thought it was Bravo.
Yeah, Bravo.
Bravo's in the majority.
Yes.
She just wanted to bait her.
She just, you know, she didn't want her water bill going crazy, so, no, I think they had done their role and I, I think.
I do recall that.
Yeah. We're ready for the town to get in there and see if they can make something happen. The other thing, the other thing is, I don't know if this has gone anywhere, but at one point I heard, I can't remember which meeting I heard it in, that the museum might be interested in being a, in the business center.
Welcome center.
A welcome center. I, I don't remember what meeting I heard that in, if it was.
It was a discussion, I remember last year.
Was it Chayenne remaining?
Well, I remember last year, uh, the original festival, by the, uh, fall festival, is that they had talked to the museum about moving one of the cabins that sits out back of the museum.
Oh, the bathhouses.
The bathhouses.
Yeah, it's one of the original bathhouses.
Trying to move it over to Masconomo, uh, as part of their, uh.
Probably.
You know, and, and then become a visitor, you know, and for the, uh, but I, I, my understanding is the building is not movable, it's not streetworthy.
I guess my.
No, it was a jigsaw puzzle getting, uh, and getting it back there.
Okay, so, yeah.
It was hard to fit in between houses.
My only point is, we need public bathrooms year-round and so the harbor solution would be great for summer, but, you know, if you're doing that, but we can. Holiday by the sea and you need public bathrooms, that's not gonna be a great option.
I mean, I will, I will continue to try to get Harbor's Point to sit down. And I think that once I get that, it's just a matter of.
You need help from Greg.
No, I think that I've got a better shot at it than Greg does at this point, with all due respect.
Okay, so. If the DIP, the DIP has decided that they would, that Bravo would, the DIP and Bravo are prepared to make Bravo's restrooms available if Bravo can get a reduction in their water bill?
They wanted some kind of, um.
Some assistance, some.
Assistance, yeah, we didn't get specifics, we didn't want to get in the middle of that conversation.
But let's put Greg in the middle of that conversation now.
And that was an off-season sort of thing?
It, right now, it's until we get something better.
Yeah.
Well, right now, I guess it's year-round.
Yeah, I mean, it could be.
I mean, eventually it'd be off-season because we would have bathrooms that would be open six months of the year.
Right.
They would have to pick up that slack, but most of the pressure is in the on-season.
And then.
Majority pressure.
Brian is going to try and see if we can get something on the wrong side of Bean Street. And, um, Bion and company are looking at possible grants. The planning board is looking at site plan or approval for the plugs. And when the pieces get together, we need, it would be possible to design a building that would meet the requirements of the mass.
Sound right?
So, so who's looking at the grants, who's looking at the grants, the?
Bion can. Bayon tends to do a lot of that himself.
'Cause it's, it's all waters-related stuff.
And, and that-
Sew helps.
Sew helps.
Okay, alright. So long as somebody's active there to see what the requirements are.
So we know what the requirements for the grants are, so we, we don't design something that doesn't work. Okay. Have we beaten this one?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, tell them what-
I'm sorry, before you move on, I, I say that Lisa Bonneville is, is online.
Oh.
Um, and I know that she had hoped to give, um, materials to us, some staff who, the materials didn't come to us in time to be officially on the meeting tonight. There is a, a longevity bench that she would like to relocate.
Okay.
Um, you can't officially approve it tonight, but I think, if I can speak for Lisa, she would probably like at least a, an indication that that is likely to be approved, so she could continue to put the pieces in place. So, there's a bench, um, near the corner of Mill and Forest, and it's underneath a bunch of pine trees.
Sappy, sappy bench.
And it's, it's getting inundated with pine sap, uh, which is difficult to clean off, and, um, so they would like to relocate it a, a bit down the street, with the old, I guess there used to be a bus pull-off on Forest.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little-
Just a little further, closer to town, on Forest. Um, and, and so that, the request would be that you would approve that new location. And I, and she has, uh, she's working with the Botec School and trying to have them help with it, and it'd be helpful to get at least a nodding aheads that this is likely to happen sooner rather than later, and you can officially approve it at your next meeting.
Yeah, I was on one of those longevity bench walks when we went by the sappy bench, so it's got a nice nickname, and yeah.
That's the name of it as a sappy bench?
Yes, because all the sappy collabs-
Well, then why move it, it's got a great name.
He doesn't try to come up with somebody's pants.
Yeah, it needs to be moved, I'm definitely okay.
Okay, um, sense of the meeting, that seems like a good idea?
Yeah, I think I'll go with the old-
Don't say it when you can, don't let it when you can say it, don't say it when you can go on, don't go on when you can wink.
So, Lisa, assuming you can hear us here, I think, um, we'll officially approve it next meeting, but I think you have a green light to keep proceeding, to make it happen.
And, and just to be clear, the next meeting is the 24th, and, uh-
Right. Yeah, I, yes. Does that all make sense to you, Lisa?
Yes, I appreciate your bringing it up, and I apologize, I thought I sent this package along to you last week, and I did not, uh, I found my discovery when I got back from being in Maine all weekend, and, um, yes, I'm glad that Kathy is, is a witness to the sappy bench, and, um, it, uh, it would just be moved a little bit up before Mill Street, rather than after Mill Street, not Forest Street. And the reason I wanted to expedite it, um, was because we're working with, uh, with Essex Tech, Technical High School, and one of their classes is, um, their students themselves are going to be putting the new pad in for us. And we just pay for the materials, so they have to obviously get that in order and get materials ordered. It will not be going in until the work on Forest Street is complete past that point, however. I think, uh, just to stay safe, Chuck Dan recommended we wait until the, uh, the water went through, um, Forest Street up near Mill. So, it may, it sounds like the reports you made earlier tonight, it sounds like that's gonna be, um, past the end of September, which is what we were hoping for, but, uh, we can put a bench, we can put a pad in later, and I will, I can now actually notify them that, um, it probably will be a little past the end of September, uh, before they'll be having their students work on that, but I appreciate your bringing it up, Greg, very much, thank you.
You've not just cut the tree down.
Oh, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Not if I'm not discovered.
Becky's not here, so it's okay.
Um, is there anything else before, um, the town clerk appointment?
No, I'm sorry, no, no.
Um, I don't wanna interrupt your note-taking, 'cause that's what causes things to actually happen.
Well, depending on Debbie's notes, so.
Um, Mr. Brown, do you have a motion?
Yes, I guess I must. So we have no discussion on Christine, is?
I think all we do is ratify his decision.
That's correct, okay.
Well, so, yeah, I'm pleased to present to you my recommendation that you ratify Christine Dixon as our new town clerk. She comes to us very highly recommended, she currently serves as the Assistant City Clerk in Beverly, and has worked as a city clerk in Amesbury prior to Beverly. So we were very much impressed with her credentials and her demeanor, but the search committee and I fully embrace her as coming on board and appreciate your ratification.
Select Board has read all of the material that was provided, and she sounds great. So, I move that the Board ratify and appoint, ratify the appointment of Christine Dixon as Town Clerk.
Sir. Is there a special? John?
Yes.
Ann says yes.
Yes.
Kathy says yes. Brian says yes.
Yes.
Jeff says yes. Okay.
She would've been here tonight, but they're busy at the polls.
Uh, Stan understands.
Okay, well, I hope she will be able to join, to join us, for this.
What, what is her expected starting?
The 10th.
The 10th.
Yeah, next, next week.
Okay, um, continuing discussion of a town administrator transition.
So a couple of, couple of items here, a couple of three or so, um, just, again, continuing discussion of how the, the process that you wanna follow. Kathy is the assigned champion for this effort, you know, we were talking the other day, um, and one of the ideas was, would, would you like to be involved with selecting the recruiting firms, we're simply gonna proceed with the recruiting firm. There are a handful of firms out there that do this work regularly, um, we would get proposals from, from some of them. And you could, you could certainly be involved in their selection, unless you're gonna be working, working with them, so if you'd like. Or you could have a couple of you work with me in that selection process, it's a couple of options.
Okay.
I asked Greg to bring this to the Board, 'cause I didn't wanna speak on behalf of the Board, so I'm certainly happy to work with Greg, and, you know, one other person, uh, or if you all wanna be involved, that's totally fine with me, I just didn't wanna speak for you guys.
Well, I, I think we definitely need to have a firm, we owe that to the tax payers here to-
Oh, yeah.
Survey the landscape and make sure we've got the right person, the best person for the position, so. And I'm happy to join in.
I think, I think we should all review the people who are available, not all of us, a small group, come with a couple of recommendations to the whole board, 'cause this is-
Yeah.
This is a critical decision for the whole.
The whole board is to-
And, and I don't think we have to all be involved in every step in that way, but if you and one other person would be willing to-
Yeah, I mean, John and I can screen, yeah, maybe, and bring forward a couple of-
Come up with three, go three.
Yeah.
And then the other, um, item was-
Sew, yeah.
Yeah, oh, so, you know, one of the first steps in the process when you hire a firm is they're gonna say, what are your requirements, right? What are the requirements of the position? And it came to my attention, um, that at one point, um, Manchester had a town manager, not a town administrator. So, um, number, okay, I misunderstood. But it, it still begs the point, is, you know, you wanna make sure that you're, uh, we're validating the requirements as they are today, Greg's current role, um, if you see any need to change that, or, um, you know, it's, have a, a different model, this is the time to discuss it before you hire somebody. So, just wanted to be transparent and open the process.
Do we have a rough model, like, to start with?
The special act is the, is the model.
That's the model.
Yes.
So Greg, she's explained the main differences between the two.
So, it's, so, um, there is no statutory definition of the town administrator or a town manager. But each, each community tends to define the role of that position. Historically, town managers have slightly more authority than a town administrator. Typically, that authority lies with hire-and-fire decisions. For example, some town managers would not have you ratify, um, have the Board ratify a, a department appointment.
Right, so the town clerk discussion we just had-
Correct.
Would not have happened.
Some, some towns would not have that step. Uh, similar with appointing committees. Some, some towns have the town manager do all of those appointments. And that, again, is out of your realm. The, the town administrator special act that, that Manchester has, it's a fairly strong town administrator role, because I do have hire-fire ability, you have to ratify it, but I'm, I'm doing all of that recruiting and, and selecting and presenting to you, whereas-
We don't ratify your dismissal of anyone?
No, you don't. There were some towns, town administrators, where they're weaker, the select board has more role in, in personnel matters. For example, just as a, for example. Some town administrators aren't, aren't signing off on, uh, on payroll and on accounts payable. The Chair of the Board does that. So that's why I say our, the special act that Manchester has is a fairly strong town administrator, but it's not as strong as a full town manager in some other towns.
The other thing would be contracts too, so we, we-
You ratify contracts.
Ratify the contracts, but a town manager, um, might be empowered to-
Correct.
Do that, so, that's, those are the main differences.
If you had to do all over again, okay, were there certain things that you would want to more power in some areas and make wishful powers elsewhere? Or you think that, what, the role is you've defined it, and that's the space that you've defined the role in last, like, how many years?
So it, it has, from my perspective, it has worked, um, I haven't felt overly constrained. There are certainly decisions that I would do differently, but that's, you know, that's always gonna be the case. But, but that's not an authority issue so much. So, I, I came from, from another town where I was the town manager, and the roles are very, very similar. The duties and, and authorities are very similar. If you wanna do some more, just, if you want, if you're interested in streamlining some of your meetings in your role, then yes, you could delegate more authority to the town administrator slash town manager. You, you can actually do that through the special, through the current special act, because there's a catch-all in there that allows you to delegate some of your work to me currently.
I guess what I'm looking at though is, you're playing pretty full, you know, and, uh-
Yeah, I mean, the short answer to that is, is that, yes.
To, uh, you know, I think that our role is to support, uh, the town administrator, by taking some of that responsibility off your shoulders, obviously, uh, you know, you listen to what you have to say, but, uh, I'm just curious as to, I like the model, I don't know another, I guess the point is, I don't know a, a different model.
Yeah, I mean, I lived somewhere else where there was a town manager, and, and, and like I said, I'm not advocating one way or another, it just, it came to my attention that, you know, if you're, before you do a search, it's prudent to just look at the model and make sure you're okay with it and don't wanna change anything. I, I tend to look at these things as, is there any time when we're really rubber-stamping Greg? That's, that's kind of an indication, well, you know, if you're rubber-stamping that, he, he probably should be authorized to just do it, you know, that's, that's one way of looking at those, those items. Um, I kinda like the fact that we appoint the boards, you know, the, the people to the committees, I think that's-
I agree with that, I don't wanna say that.
I think we actually know the residents better because we live here, um, so that's not something I personally would wanna give up. But when you, you know, let's think about some of the minutia that we do, um, is there any of the, you know, the signing of the deeds or the signing of certain things, is, is there anything that we are, um, that you feel might, that we might not need to do? It's just an extra step and, and that isn't necessary?
Well, if you want the trees, you can have the trees.
Well, and, and so, you know, I'm, I'm getting at stuff like that, you know, it's, it's not something that we have to decide tonight, I just wanted to make sure that, you, 'cause we'll all review the requirements for the position before we post anything, and it's just prudent to think about the model, and maybe talk to some folks and feel, see how they feel about it, but it's just a prudent step to take.
I wonder, is there like, as candidates come forward, is it that we look at, so the next guy's not, the woman's not gonna be Greg, it's gonna be somebody else?
Right.
So do we maybe then tune it to their skill set, I don't know?
Well, you gotta be careful with that, though, you, um-
I don't wanna make the job fit somebody.
No, that, that's the point, the, the role has to be the role, so your governance model can work, regardless of who sits on this board, right?
Right.
And, and then you hire someone to fit the way you want the town to operate. And, and a town manager typically, I'm just trying to think of, you know, we went through this exercise, was it a year or two ago? What are some of the things that we should be delegating to either the department heads? And we did some, we let go of some things, but there's probably some more stuff in there. I, I mean, why do we have to sign the cemetery deeds, I'm just asking?
You don't.
We don't need to do that, right?
That's a rubber stamp.
That is, that is something that should just not happen, so-
Okay, but that's, that's not in-
Well, but, um-
But you could delegate.
We can delegate that, but I, I think we should kinda look at this hol-
We can make a list of things, if you-
Make a list, let's do this holistically, and-
Actually, as part of the operations audit.
Exactly.
The person we begin-
Oh, perfect, yes, 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 yes.
The person we begin can help-
Right.
Exactly.
With this discussion.
Yes, yes.
'Cause they, they will, they will have experience with multiple different towns and different structures.
That's a great point, that's a great point, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering-
This is my second Massachusetts town, so I don't have wide experience in Massachusetts towns.
I'm wondering if the job description, whether it's manager, administrator, are we limiting ourselves by having one description or another in terms of the people that say, I'm interested in this?
Right. Oh, just, if I can, um-
I don't think so.
Maybe not.
Um, people will read the-
Yes.
The special act to see what authority the person has. If they're doing their homework, they'll read that.
The people that we see would probably already have it, because they would've taken one of these roles.
Yes.
Or maybe both of them in other towns, they already know this is-
If you look at Hamilton and Wenham, Wenham has a town administrator who has much, has less authority than you do.
Yes.
Hamilton has a town manager who has almost the same, almost exactly the same authority as you do. So, the distinguished, the distinction between the two is-
I mean, it's really usually hiring and contracts, I, I mean, at a high level, and the other stuff we can-
The name of the position is semantics, it's, it, there's no, there's no meaning to it.
I totally agree with you, however, titles are important to some people, I would just say that.
Okay.
And to answer John's question, could it dissuade some people, sure. And to think otherwise is a bit naive, right? But I'm, like, once again, I'm not promoting it, I just wanted to, it's part of the process for hiring, you evaluate the current state and make any desired changes.
And we're doing that with the audit, and we will come back after the audit, and we can just agree whether there's anything that's, needs to be changed in the, in the, um, in the act, rather than just in the corners where we're allowed to delegate.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything more in the town administrator transition? I guess you're done with that, I have another certain report, whatever was left in there.
Uh, just, just my schedule, it's a little choppy the next week here, and then I'll be gone. For an extended period, for the month.
We did talk about needing to help with the prep for the next meeting, right? Um, is there anything that we know is gonna be on the agenda that we need to?
So we'll, we'll get a draft agenda by, by next Wednesday.
Okay. What day are you leaving again?
The, the, yeah, the eleventh.
Eleven. You're here through the tenth. The eleventh.
I'm here on the tenth, I'll be here in the morning on the eleventh.
How are you coming back? I, what I'm asking is shall we give you a big pile of stuff to read on the airplane coming home?
Sure, why not?
You got the time.
I've got the time.
Spare you some movies.
Yes, I'm not just a movie watcher.
That's how I, that's how I figure out how long a flight is, is it two or three, is it a two or three movie?
Two or three movie flight.
Oh, God, a seven movie flight is a bet.
Oh, no, you can only handle, uh, two and a half movies.
So, good.
Is there another motion?
A final motion. Do adjourn.
Yes. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.